Welcome, everyone. I would like to call this committee the whole meeting on Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, at 4:00 PM to order. May we have roll call, please?
Benaja?
Present.
Radke? Here. Niemec?
Here.
Mallett? Here. Herrick?
Here. Oh, sorry. Move to the floor, Spreuer.
All in favor?
Hi. Radke?
Here.
No, you're here.
Jumping the gun.
Have we, ma'am, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united, united under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any changes to the agenda? See, none. I need approval of the agenda.
I move. Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Posting on motion carries. I need a motion for the minutes of 5:07:24.
Support.
Is there any discussion, corrections? See, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posting, motion carries. At this time, this is for public input. Is there anyone who is wishing to address this committee? Please come forward. Going once, going twice. Public input is closed. Our next is petition communications. We have a presentation by Rebecca Brandt, Bay County Mosquito Control Manager. It's regarding the mosquito control program overview. Rebecca?
Thank you. I am proud to give you an overview of our mosquito control program and some of the highlights that our program has seen over the past few years and kind of what the future holds for mosquito control. This is our 48th season in Bay County, and our mission today is no different than what it was back in 1977. One, we are here to reduce mosquitoes to reduce the risk of viruses for our residents, and we're here to reduce mosquitoes to improve quality of life for our residents and our visitors. When we do this, we want to make sure that we have minimal impact to the environment. We are protecting our pollinators. We are protecting our organic farms, and we have thoughtful and considerate pesticide applications in what we do. So a reminder of some of the components of our program. We work in a proactive-to-reactive way. Proactive meaning we want to reduce mosquitoes before they're biting and flying around. So that starts with education, and we start with community events, civic groups, school presentations. Our technicians are out every day knocking on doors of residents, reminding them where mosquitoes breed, how they breed, how to protect themselves from mosquito bites. Of course, reducing the sources of breeding is very important, too. We just had a scrap tire collection this past weekend where we collected over 1,000 tires. And in the past 12 to 13 years, we've removed over 30,000 tires from the Bay County landscape alone, all funded through Eagle grants over the past 12 to 13 years. So no additional cost to our program or to our residents. The next component of our program is our surveillance function, and this is our biology department. This is the core of mosquito control. What they do guides all of our field operations. So we have 90 different adult mosquito traps that we collect each week throughout the county. Those trap collections are brought back to our office. They're identified by species, by numbers, and all of that is telling our crews where we need to be and particularly where we don't need to be. That's part of the considerate portion of pesticide application. Don't go where you're not needed. You don't need to do it. Part of surveillance as well is the virus testing that we do, testing birds for West Nile virus, and we also test mosquitoes for five different mosquito-transmitted viruses. We send that to the state health department each week. Currently, as of 2023, we have three active viruses in Bay County: West Nile virus, Jamestown Canyon virus, and Eastern equine encephalitis. So one of the real big benefits of us having mosquito control program, a countywide mosquito control program, is that our biology department is an early detection system for virus activity, meaning we find it early, we can respond early, and that's what other communities don't have. Unfortunately, they have to wait till a virus affects a human, somebody gets sick, animals get sick. We're finding it early in mosquitoes, and what that allows us to do is get the message out to our residents through the media, letting them know viruses are active, and that allows our residents to, we are not trying to cause panic, we are not trying to cause fear. It allows them to decide how they want to respond. Do they want to take protective measures to reduce that risk? It also, by us finding those viruses early, allows us to respond with controlling mosquitoes early. We can start fogging, we can reduce those mosquito populations before that virus begins to amplify. So we're stopping it, kind of nipping it in the bud before it grows even more and before it gets to a human. Those are the real advantages of having an organized mosquito control program. Our next component is our larval control. This is where the bulk of our control activity takes place. This is our daytime summer shift. We are controlling mosquitoes while they are in water, standing water where they breed. This is, again, proactive, the most effective way to control mosquitoes because they are in the standing water, they're isolated, most cost-effective, most efficient way to do it. And of course, the final component, this is what people are most familiar with mosquito control, the adult mosquito control. This is the truck that fogs down the road at night. This is where we have to be really mindful of the thoughtful and considerate pesticide application. We don't do it in areas that it doesn't need to be done. If the counts don't warrant it, we're not going to do it. We make sure that we are using lowest effective dosage rate in everything that we do with our adult mosquito control. I could stand here and give you numbers and numbers and data of how many catch basins we treat and how many miles we drive and how much product we use, but that does not measure the success of a mosquito control program. More does not mean better, and that's part of responsible pesticide use. What matters for us is being prepared, being able to respond quickly when there's an emergency, when there's virus activity, when we have a heavy rain event. It's how prepared we are, how quickly we can respond, and how efficiently and effectively that we respond to that. It's not about numbers of about how many things that you do and how much you use. The numbers don't tell the real story. I want to talk about three different highlights of our program over the past few years. One is the growth of technology, and the growth of technology is happening in every industry, but in mosquito control in particular, we've really jumped on the GIS kind of digitizing bandwagon and have digitized and used GIS mapping for a lot of our daytime and nighttime applications, the software, the hardware. What it's doing is making our program more accurate, more efficient, it's eliminating errors, and overall reducing liability for our program. And we're actually looking at a whole new system this year to bring into the program that will continue to help us with that. Another thing is something as simple, we invested in a 3D printer, and we have an employee, Alec Lepick, who can design necessary parts that we need. If we need to source parts for application equipment, he designs it. We print it in-house, things that we can't find online. He designed and printed application equipment for us so that we have precise to the exact number of grams that we need to put in a catch basin. He's designing and printing it in-house for us, and he's designing and printing traps for adult mosquitoes that fit our needs. You know, there's certain elements that are specific to Bay County habitats, the species we're trying to capture, and we're designing those things here in Bay County so that they're exactly what we need. Another highlight was back in 2022, we were selected of one of three mosquito control programs, the United States, to receive a visit from the Pan-African Mosquito Control Association. So this is an association of top-level researchers from the continent of Africa who have partnered with the World Health Organization to reduce malaria on the continent of Africa. This was by far the most humbling experience of my 25 years with mosquito control because it kind of brought a global problem, it really hit home. You're both working towards the same goal. And what started as these researchers coming to our program to discuss viruses and mosquito species and genetic makeup of mosquitoes and viruses really got down to the ground level of us, them asking us, but how do you do it? How do you reduce mosquitoes? How do they bring back to their residents on their continent to turn over buckets and reminding them that mosquitoes breed in containers and especially, you know, use insect repellent, the importance of that in an area where malaria is so dominant with their residents? And in particular, an area where we say, well, you go indoors, well, we don't have screens, we don't have doors. Absolutely humbling experience, highlight of my career by far, and I think it's just a good reminder of how fortunate we are. You know, we're so fortunate to have the drainage we have, we're so fortunate to have the sanitary sewer we have, we're so fortunate to have the clean drinking water, so fortunate to have a mosquito control program. When we see virus activity, we can respond quickly and immediately, and we don't have to worry so much about that activity flourishing in our community. And third highlight, this is one of the control projects that we've undertaken in the past few years, and really a big deal for us at Bay County Mosquito Control. We've talked about it with some of you already over the past couple of years, but a mosquito species called Coccolitida perturbans that has really grown in numbers along our shoreline and fragmities and cattail habitats. We have worked for a good four years on developing and designing a study to learn more about this mosquito species, the habitat in which it breeds. It's very unique to us in Bay City, Bay County, Michigan. It's not anything that they're seeing throughout the United States with that open water, with that sort of vegetation, with that sort of species. We have worked with numerous mosquito control programs throughout the United States over the years to try to better understand them and get some strategies on how to better control it, multiple vendors, and we've done three years of surveillance to try to pinpoint so that we can do the best control of that species we can. And last fall, we were finally able to do a larval control treatment by air, a pilot project, we call it, near Finn Road Park. And what we're hoping is we can measure the success of that this June and July, when we'll see the results of it, and hopefully be able to see that we've made a difference in that mosquito count because that mosquito species is a disease vector, a virus vector. We want to make sure that we can bring those numbers down. So it might not seem a big deal to people outside of the mosquito control world, it might just seem, well, that's what you do, but it really is a big deal. It's gotten our program nationwide attention for the amount of surveillance and data we've collected with it, and we've actually been asked to publish our study after 2024 in a scientific journal. So that's a good path in the back for us. And finally, into the future, what do we see for mosquito control in the future? Well, we've got a great program, we've got great staff, we've got great support from our community. Some of the uncontrollables would be the climate. What we're noticing is that our season is not ending as soon as it used to. We're seeing the mosquito season go into early October, the first couple of weeks. We used to be able to end about the end of September, but the season's going longer because we're seeing warmer temperatures. And what that means at the surface level for us is changes in staffing and changes that affects our budgeting, but really, deep down, we're seeing mosquito species starting to move northward that we've never seen before. So it's changing. We're bringing on new mosquito species, which means new viruses that we're monitoring for and new habitats that we have to keep an eye out for. So that's one of the big things in the future that we'll have to continue to manage. We continue to keep an eye on regulation. Pesticide industry is a heavily regulated industry, so we always make sure that we have a positive relationship with our regulators, primarily Eagle and the Department of Ag, making sure that we're aware of changes and have a voice in those changes. We monitor resistance management. That's making sure that mosquitoes don't become resistant to the products we use. So we are constantly changing the active ingredients and the products to make sure that resistance is not an issue. It costs us a little bit more money each year to do that, but the reason we do it is so that 48 years from now, our mosquitoes are still susceptible to the products that we're using. And of course, the funding. We are a fiscally responsible program. We have always managed our money well, our budget well. We currently operate with about a $1.7 million budget. That budget allows us to provide a competitive wage for our seasonal staff, to hire the most qualified, educated staff we can. It allows us to provide the services and products that we feel are necessary for our residents for our program. It allows us to repair and maintain and replace vehicles and equipment as needed throughout the program for what's best for our residents. It also allows us to hopefully reserve a little bit of money each year to put in our savings account, to our fund balance. We currently have a $1.5 million fund balance. That fund balance is reserved for primarily public health emergencies. In the event we had a severe disease outbreak or perhaps significant flooding that would require an aerial treatment response, we would expect that to cost about $1 million. And so we keep that fund balance in the event of a public health emergency. We also have that fund balance available because we do have a 14,000-square-foot facility, which is now 20 years old. We bought that facility by doing what we're doing right now, saving a little bit of money each year. We were able to build that facility with our own savings, and that is exactly how we continue to plan to manage it through the future, is by saving a little bit of money and showing how we can effectively do that. You will see on your agenda today, our millage expired at the end of 2023. We are requesting a millage renewal on the November ballot. That would be a .55 mil eight-year renewal in order for us to be able to continue this very successful and well-supported program. Any questions?
Tom?
I just, I've got maybe more comments and questions, but, you know, we always see that when we go to another county or area where they don't have mosquito control, how much we appreciate the mosquito control we have in Bay County because, you know, they'll eat you alive, you know, basically, and they're all, mosquitoes are all over you. And the other comment I want to make is that I think it's amazing what you do with the budget because I know the chemicals cannot, they're expensive. Anything with a chemical, any kind of chemical, the price just goes through the roof all the time. You know, it's always going up exponentially, you know, from year to year. And for you to, you know, even have any type of fund balance, I think, is amazing. I just can only commend you on the work you and your staff do because it's not easy. It's not easy to budget anything, and I mean, everybody that works for the county does a lot of juggling, but, you know, I was really surprised to hear how high your fund balance was, especially, like I said, especially with the cost of chemicals. And you have never asked for a raise, you know, in the budget, in your millage, which I think is amazing. But thank you for the great job you do.
Thank you. Can I clarify? We did ask for a millage, we had a millage increase in 2016 from .5 mils, .45 mils to .55 mils. So our last request was an increase in 2016, which received 84% approval.
We just caught tiny.
Yeah.
So I heard something today, I think about Eastern equine encephalitis, about the numbers going up. I don't know, I just caught part of the story, is there?
I've seen on the news Jamestown Canyon virus is detected in Saginaw this year, which is expected, this time of year, we're expecting to see it. It's what we'll call endemic. We expect to see it each year now as a mild virus. I haven't followed the Eastern equine numbers yet in the state. I haven't heard much about it. We had two cases last year. Those were our first two cases in the history of Bay County, and again, that's where our surveillance comes into play because we detected it early. We had traps out where we suspected we would find it due to the species, and we found it early. It did exactly what we wanted to do, and we were able to respond to it quickly with our adult sightings, so before amplified. We're certainly going to keep an eye out for it because we do have that species. That's a virus that's, it's very significant, the most significant mosquito-transmitted virus we have here in Michigan because for those that do develop a severe illness, there's a 30% fatality rate, which is much more significant than, say, West Nile virus or Jamestown Canyon. So we'll continue to watch that in 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a comment. Rebecca, thanks for the great job you do, and especially the dedicated staff, seasonal staff, as well as your full-time professional staff there. It seems like each summer they come back, there's a lot of repeat folks coming back into work during the mosquito season and throughout the summer and the fall. And just want to also thank you for whenever you're called by residents of Bay County, you're right there, you know, explaining things to them. And also just let people know that, again, the graduation season is upon us, and if they're having an outdoor event, whether it's an anniversary or a graduation party, if they call mosquito control, you'll come out and do an application within 24 hours at their site, and that pretty much boils down to the mosquito issue when you're hosting an event at your home. So thank you for all that you do, and it's money well spent with that millage. It's a very small millage, and people really appreciate the suppression of mosquitoes and all the other work that you do.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Thank you, Rebecca.
Motion received.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posting on motion carries. Our next one is the City of Mill and Planning Commission, notice of a public hearing for the master plan.
Motion received.
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Posting on motion carries. The Bay County Board of Commissioners, the placement of a millage question on the November 2024 ballot.
I move it.
Support.
Is there any discussion, questions? Yes, Vaughn?
So I've had several residents in the last week or so approach me and say they'd like to have it on, you know, and they'd like to vote for it, they have it on the ballot. So I was a little hesitant, but I think that's, the residents have asked for it. We did the survey, although it was a limited survey, and there were quite a few that said they would be in favor of a millage vote, of doing it. So I will be voting in favor.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Tom?
Yeah, I just want to say, ever since I've been on this board, I've been a proponent of, of what? You know, we all, we always say, keep it down at a local level, let the people decide, and that's my reason for voting for this because people will make their choice, one way or the other, you know, they're going to decide this thing. We're not going to, we can't, to me, some of us can't sit here and decide that we're going to do it. Let those people decide, and they will. So one way or the other, we'll figure this out.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Jim?
Make a comment and thank the pool supporters for their persistence in trying to place this proposal before the voters. And like Tom and Vaughn, I think it's up to the voters to decide if they would want to increase their property taxes, you know, a very small amount, to provide a community center pool that will probably serve the community for hopefully 25 years at least. The last one lasted 47 years, but it, I know, not all the proponents are here, but hopefully you'll share the word with what the Bay County Board did and ultimately leave it up to the taxpayers and voters of Bay County as to whether we go for it with the community center pool. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And I have had conversations regarding this also. They want it on the ballot, and I agree with Tom and Vaughn. It's not up to us to decide, it's up to the people to decide. If you want it, you vote for it. We're going to give it to you, so you go from there. But I'm not against it, I'm not for it, I'm just going to put it in the ballot, and we'll see what happens. So, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Posting on motion carries. Okay, our Bay County Prosecutor, National Child Welfare Law Conference for the 2024 travel request.
Support.
Is there any questions, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posting on motion carries. The Bay County Register of Deeds, Agreement with Computer Systems Incorporated, CSI Equity Protect.
I move it.
Support.
Brandon, would you like to come up and explain this?
Thank you, Commissioners, for having me here today. Back in 2016, we implemented a new software system because we saw the need for advanced technology in our office to make sure that we're protecting land title for all of our constituents. And so at that time, we implemented what was called Doc's Pop Property Watch, and that actually gives you an alert if somebody tries to fraudulently take your property from you and file a false deed. And so it was a very protective thing at the time, and it works great. It gives you an alert after the fact, but what we're going to do with this Equity Protect is it will actually stop fraud from happening, and there's no cost to the county at all. This is going to be a paid program, unfortunately, but if you want your property protected, what this will do is, as a homeowner, it's almost like putting a lien on your own property, and then when there's title work done, it shows there's a lien and it can't be transferred. And then you get an alert right away, so then you don't have to go through the long process of going through court proceedings to try to get your property back. So this is 100% free for the county. We don't have to pay anything to use this system. The constituents will have to pay for it if they want it, but they also do have the backup of Doc's Pop Property Watch, which is free for them and free for the county as well. So with the two programs put together, we have probably one of the best systems put in place right here in Bay County. So we're pretty proud of that.
How much is it roughly, do you know?
I think for the first year, I think it's $149, and then I think somewhere around like $99 a year to have your property protected.
So how many properties are, can you include that?
It's per property.
Per property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's, you know, it's a good program to have. Basically, it's an insurance policy, right? It's your number one asset that you own. It's your biggest investment that you can possibly have, and you obviously want to protect it. So it's basically another insurance policy to protect your assets.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Yes, Vaughn?
I hear quite a few ads on the radio for this type of problem where people, people's property had been taken from them, they didn't know. It's been...
Yeah, and unfortunately, we're starting to see a spike in it, not here in Bay County because we do have places or protections in place, but down in Wayne County, they're starting to see a big spike in this, and it's actually pretty easy to do. I don't want to get into the details on television or here to give some maybe people that are looking to make a quick dime, you know, give them any ideas, but it's easy to do. That's why we want to make sure we're putting the policies in place, make sure we protect it. And there's other things in the industry that's happening as well as far as notaries and e-notaries and having notary identification systems, which is going to make it even harder to fraudulently steal property, but that's going to be a couple of years out for us yet. The technology isn't quite developed the way we want it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posting, see none, motion carries. Bay County Fair Board, acceptance of a MMDARD for Gerstacker grant.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Yes, Tom?
Because I love the Fair Board, they work so hard, and I think it's amazing that they dug up $130,000 for this thing, and, you know, and they're doing amazing stuff out there. I always go by there, I go ride my bike by there every day, and I say we're getting close to the county fair, but they work hard, you know. It's so different than it was 10 years ago, I can tell you that. Maybe it's a little longer, but it's different.
Yes, Jim?
I'd just like to commend the Fair Board as well, especially the Brandt family that has taken the leadership, and it was the former board, I believe, Tom, that approved the extension of more than a one-year lease, which precluded us at that time from getting grants. And so by going with the 15-year lease to the Fair Board, that takes that issue off the table, but I want to compliment them for being so aggressive in seeking those funds and had no cost to the county budget, seeing the improvements that we've seen at the Bay County Fairgrounds. And I want to congratulate you and thank you for your presence and all you do as members of the Fair Board.
Thank you, Jim. Rebecca, I mean, Mayor Joe, you want to come up here and talk about it, or your daughter? What kind of new improvements we're going to be looking at?
So we've got two major projects that we're working on right now, the grandstands project and then our livestock arena project. We're going to be replacing all of the bleacher seats in the livestock arena. Currently, they're all wood, and we have to paint them year after year. So they're getting a facelift, all aluminum. They're going to have the protective barriers around the edges now, which will be wonderful. We're going to be putting concrete throughout the whole livestock arena so we don't have to worry about dust for our exhibitors and for our participants and visitors. We're going to redo our wash rack in the back. We have a good problem that we're starting to kind of outgrow our facilities and our resources, so we're purchasing some, a few more pens for our livestock animals and redoing the wash area in the back so that more of our exhibitors can wash their animals at the same time and make sure their animals are secure so that we don't have anything getting loose during Fair Week or any of our other events throughout the year. And then in the grandstands, we are replacing part of the grandstands, which is really exciting, and then the rest of the grandstands, the concrete, like the old of grandstands that was around during the horse racing time is still standing, but it's going to be getting a facelift, new paint, some concrete work done, and it's going to get new aluminum bleacher seats throughout the whole thing, and then the rest of the bleachers will get aluminum seating as well. So it's going to be safer, it's going to be a lot easier for us to maintain. We're expecting to get decades out of this work. So we're very excited and very thankful for all the support we've had from the community and the state, too. The MDDARD grants have been amazing. They were what we applied for to get that new horse barn a few years ago and some other projects at the fairgrounds as well, some electrical upgrades for the campgrounds and things. So we're very excited, and it's great to see our work come to fruition. So come out to the fair, August 6th through the 10th, and make sure you check it out.
Thank you. Yes, Vaughn?
Fortunately, one of your auctioneers passed away today. I was at the funeral.
Yeah. Rich Schmidt, yeah.
I know he's done it for many years and...
Yeah, he was wonderful. We were very sad to see that. Yeah.
Good guy.
Very good man.
He sold us some expensive chickens, didn't he?
Thank you.
High-end chickens.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on motion carries. On G, Environmental Affairs and Community Development Director, Lynwood scenic access site award funding.
I'll move it.
Is there any questions?
Laura's up here.
Would you like to give us an update?
Thank you. Just a very quick update. The resolution is requesting authorization to accept the grant awards, the ones we have in hand and the ones we anticipate. I just heard today, we did get a Gerstacker grant as well that we had applied for a while back, so that's an additional $33,000. I wanted to thank Shawna and Amber both who have helped with this final point here where we actually accept the money and have an authorization to spend the money. I know you've all heard, you know, the project's been going on a long time, you know, eight years, but I also wanted to just kind of bring up an interesting tidbit, that it's actually, the genesis of this project was actually identified 20 years ago in the, you know, locally, those folks out in Lynwood and Fraser and Co. have been working on it. But 20 years ago, in the Bay County Economic Development Strategy that was developed for the community with an MEDC grant, they came up with, it worked with the Chamber of Commerce, the business interests, different, you know, schools, as well as some of the labor organizations, and it came up with a strategy with 23 recommendations. One of those is to create Bay Future. And so, you know, work had been done and worked on since 2004 on that, as well as some of the school technical vocational improvements. Recommendation number 13 was that Bay County should work to create public access to Saginaw Bay. So I just want you to know, this is, you know, it's been a long time, but it's not just a, you know, a nice nicety, but it is one of our featured, Saginaw Bay was our biggest marketing attraction, we wanted to capitalize on that, and so this was, the genesis of this was actually for our participation, and that Jim has graciously allowed this time, was really based in, founded in the economic development strategy for Bay County.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Laura, for the hundreds of hours you've spent, at least since I've been the county executive, on pursuing the funding and getting the permits issued from the Corps and Eagle, and, you know, you wouldn't think a project like that would be as involved and complicated as it is, but being the shoreline and having two regulatory agencies as well as COVID pushing up the cost of the steel, you know, for the seawall and the asphalt for the parking lot, and you've seen this through to the end. I guess we just have to now come forward and make some donations to finish it up on the GoFundMe.
Right.
But it should be then done as soon as that money's raised with a two-to-one match, and then delivered to the residents with a bow on.
I will say, yes.
Thank you for your work.
Yes, steel has been ordered for this. This construction is going to be happening, and it's going to be wrapped up by the end of this year, for sure. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on motion carries. Mosquito Control Manager, placement of a millage question on November 2024 ballot.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on motion carries. Personnel Director, Animal Services, Animal Control Officer position hired at a one-year rate.
Support.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on motion carries. Finance Officer, the analysis of the general fund equity of 2024.
I'll move to receive.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on motion carries. The updating regarding Executive Director 2007-11.
Motion to receive.
Support.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on motion carries. And then we have the payables, the general.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on motion carries. On the referrals, we have the Committee of the Whole, 51424, the Community Corrections Manager, Fieldware LLC Software Contract.
I'll move that.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Juana, do you want to come on up and...
She's here. Close the door. Hello. I am Juana Solomon. I am the Community Corrections Manager for Bay County. The proposal that's in front of you for the Fieldware, it was a software program that we actually got funding for beginning of fiscal year 2024, but because it was omitted in the vendor's contract that you guys signed up on and approved, we had to go back and do another agenda item to put it back on the agenda so that we can get it approved for this particular contract with this vendor. This is going to be a software program that we're going to use in the pretrial department. It will help us keep up with the number of cases that are coming through. We also have some key performance measures that we have to keep data for and tracking information throughout the year to keep the funding going for pretrial. I don't know if any of you know, but pretrial is kind of taking a shift and a turn throughout the state, so it's more focused now on public safety and making sure the offenders are getting to court for every particular hearing that they're scheduled for. So this Fieldware software will help us keep up with that particular part of pretrial. So Commissioner Tim asked me to give some information about community corrections, because I guess some of you don't know. So community corrections has been around since 1988. It was part of a PA 511 Act program to keep our prison population low. So instead of just sending everybody and sending them to prison and keeping them behind bars, we try to keep them in the community and give them services in kind of a re-entry type-like effort to provide them with some information, some knowledge, some training, some skills, so that they don't go back to jail or go forward into the prison system. So I kind of oversee two departments. One is the Community Corrections Department, which handles all of your circuit court cases, and then the Pretrial Division, which is all of your pretrial bond cases. Excuse me. So I have one staff right now in pretrial. We are looking to hire another one. We have interviews tomorrow. So part of some of the questions that I guess some of the committee members had was why some of the funding is being retracted back and going to MDOC. It's a twofold question. Part of the funding is being going back to them because, one, it took us so long to get that position filled, and then, number two, our program numbers are down for some of the programs that we use. Part of that is because of legislation that came in and changed how we deal with some of the probation and parole cases. They're a bit more lenient now, I guess, is a better word that I can say. We're not as, they're not as tough on violations. So right now, it takes about six technical violations, I think it is, if I'm correct? I think it's about six technical violations before they can actually take them back to court for a formal violation. So with that being said, some of our program numbers have gone down because we don't have the access that we had before, just to go straight to court, do a violation hearing, and get them into the programs where they need to go to help them out. So that's some of the issues and some of the concern, but we're working on it. We're trying. We have a meeting coming up with legislation, MDOC, at the end of August to discuss some of the trials and tribulations that we are having as far as program utilization is concerned. So we'll see what happens. Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on motion carries. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Amber, is there a closed session?
There's none.
Any miscellaneous? How about some announcements? Yes, Tom.
Thank you. So this weekend, big baseball, softball weekend, and softball, we have Essexville Girls are playing Saturday, Friday, I don't know, one of these days. They're playing maybe tomorrow, but some, they're playing, they're still playing. Then boys, you got Pinconning, All Saints, and Western, all playing tomorrow, so good luck and everybody on the regionals, and bring it back to Bay County.
Yes.
Plus, the Memorial Cup, you know, Dick Garber is a resident of Franklin's Township,